All right. Good evening, everyone. Opening the planning board meeting for Tuesday, May 7, 2024. Start with a introduction, although we're waiting for a few, a couple of board members. James Sweeney?
Here.
Marty Crowell?
Here.
Okay, Tony Gonzalez is present. We're waiting for Larry Hassan and Yolanda Spinola. Hopefully, they join. I'm gonna review the agenda while we wait.
For the record, for the record, Madam Chair, we do have quorum with three.
All right, perfect. So tonight on the agenda, we have reviewed the acceptance of meetings from last month, a couple A and Rs. First on the agenda, Campanello Neighborhood Plan Presentation, we have second Brockton Digital Equity Plan Review and Adoption. Number three, Site Plan Review, 160 Pleasant Street. Number four, definitive subdivision, 454 Copeland Street. And number five, definitive subdivision, 0 West Street.
Madam Chair, I'm motion to approve April's minutes.
Right back. Okay, roll call. James Sweeney?
Yes.
Marty Crowell?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. All right, Evan, you want to go ahead with the A and Rs?
Sure, let's see here, which one is first? All right, first, we have 30 Christie's Drive. This is just, there's an existing building that's currently straddling two lots over the lot line. One of the lots is going to convey some of their land to the other to remedy that situation. Both lots will have the required frontage when the transfer is done. So it qualifies as an A and R.
Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, roll call. James?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Right, Tony, yes.
And for the record, Larry Hassan has joined the meeting.
Hi, Larry.
Good evening. I have trouble getting in for some reason. I don't know why.
No.
Hi, Larry.
How you doing?
Looks good. Yolando has joined as well.
Yes, I'm here.
All right, so we have five board members. Just want to take a minute to announce that tonight is Larry's last meeting with the board. He's been with us how many years now, Larry?
Five years.
Five years. It's been a long time.
It flies when you're having fun, but it's been an honor and a pleasure to work with everybody in all the departments that are involved. And it's a lot of hard work that what that planning department does and what we do to help the community. And I just, you know, I'm real glad to be of service to help guide everything along to what they say orderly growth and development for our community. So it's a pleasure to work with everybody.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you as well, Larry. Wish you the best.
Thank you.
We're gonna miss you, Larry.
All right, so we were on to A and R for 365 West Gate Drive.
All right, so this one, it's at the mall. They're just kind of splitting off a small little triangular portion of their land that's used by the abutting property for parking. They're splitting it off as a non-buildable parcel, which makes this a one lot plan, which allows it to qualify for an A and R.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, roll call. James?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Yolando?
Yes.
All right, Tony Gonzalez, yes. Okay, next up, we have the presentation for Campello Neighborhood Plan.
I am going to share my screen. And just a little bit of background, Madam Chair, the planning department with Evan and John Fay and I have been working on the Campello Plan for over a year now, I think, along with a steering committee of Campello residents and businesses. And we've had four community meetings at South Middle School and have had four, I guess we call them encounters out in the field where we've taken the plan and gone out to where people are at summer events last year to get their opinions and input. And so that has led us to this current plan, which was funded by Mass Housing Partnership as part of their Complete Communities or Complete Neighborhoods program. And we're very pleased with with the product. And so we'll be asking you, it's been on the city's website for a month now. And you have all had it for a while to review also. So I'm just going to go through some very quick, brief slides. And hopefully, at the end of this, we'll have a motion for the board to adopt this and to refer it to City Council for action. So if I may, we're looking at the Campello Neighborhood, starting as far north as Nielsen and going all the way down to the West Bridgewater line. It's such a long district, we have to put this onto two different slides. But what the neighborhood has come up with, what the community has come up with, is that they would like to see a more mixed-use neighborhood center north of Keith Park, building between Montello and Main Street, filling in those blocks to create a more neighborhood, a walkable neighborhood. As you move closer to the train, train station, we see here in orange, an area that is dedicated towards a higher density housing use and more transit-oriented development. We have the MBTA Station that's right behind Keith Park and some other new development that's happening in there on Montello. And so there's an opportunity to work with the community to increase the density, increase the number of residential units, which means there's more people spending money in the neighborhood, which helps the local businesses. As we move further south, down the corridor, at the very bottom of the page, down in this area, you have the Campello High Rise, which is undergoing a, a planning process by the Brockton Housing Authority. And they plan on rebuilding that. And interestingly enough, they are building it to the standards that we have established through this planning process. Yay. As we move further south, there are two residential streets, Watson and Holmes. Don't know where they got those names. But those are some very nice, single-family and, and small multifamily development up, up against the river. Further south of that, we have a more of a, what we're calling a commercial box area. There's a small grocery store. There's a, a large gas station, and there's opportunities to do some more infill commercial development. And by commercial box, we're, we're referring more towards an auto reliant retail section. So whereas the north end of the planning study is, is a walkable community, these are kind of uses that you would probably take your car to. And so we further, come further down the, down Main Street, we see an area that we're calling supportive industrial, and then further down at the old Kmart Plaza, we're talking about commercial and anchor, commercial and industrial anchor. So how do these properties get reused? And, and these are the, the recommendations for the community, from the community. What we would like to see is and how do you create development that's on the outside of these areas and have parking on the inside? Whether it's surface parking or, you know, God willing, we can afford some structured parking. But that is the basis of the, the real core of the mixed-use neighborhood. So it comes all the way down to Perkins or South Street and a block just south of that towards East Market Street. You can see Keith Park on the south side of this project, and one of the community objectives is to expand the park. There's an opportunity to potentially relocate some roads to improve traffic circulation and improve safety. And then that would also give us an opportunity to expand the park long range. That's not going to happen next week. This illustration gives you an idea on how those blocks get rebuilt in between Main Street and Montello. So just as an example, or as a, you know, an idea, if, if you know where the Franklin Building is at the corner of Perkins and Main Street, this is kind of what that building looks like. So it's, it's three, four stories, active first floor uses, could be mixed uses above residential, could be office, but people didn't want to see huge blocks torn down and redeveloped into enormous walls of buildings. So we got the idea of what if you take the Franklin Building and just were to flip it onto each corner, how would that lay out? And so you can see four more buildings that are similar in size to the Franklin Building. And then with some smaller buildings on the infill, which are kind of the same size as Italian Kitchen over here. So it's, when you think about it, it's not a scary, you know, super thick development. These are buildings that you've already know and love, and you can see how they lay out on, on a site as creating what we're calling this hollow square. Sometimes it's called a Texas Donut because it's a very popular housing style for development down south. We're talking about increasing more pocket parks, creating a community plaza at Main and South Street. We're talking about improved transportation and bike access. We have, we're blessed with wide sidewalks in this area, but we're also talking about improving the streetscape. So more trees, more lighting, places for people to sit as they're walking, all to keep a very active first floor uses. And I am going to go through some of the recommendations for housing. We want to encourage development of housing near the MBTA Station. This is a great opportunity for people to be able to use transit to get into the city or also increase access to the MBTA, or excuse me, to the Proctor Area Transit Bus Routes in the area. We want to create zoning that complies with the new MBTA Communities Law that the state passed. We would like to amend zoning to require additional setbacks where the parking goes, how much more open space, and this is going to be the next phase of our work coming up shortly. And then they ask us to consider the missing middle type of housing. And the missing middle are those units that are duplexes, up to small, you know, four, eight-unit apartment buildings that are in between the single-family home and the large residential apartment complexes. So it's this missing middle that is, has kind of disappeared from our communities over the years. Oh, why is this there? It's advancing. Economic Development Recommendations, we'd like to work with the Brockton Redevelopment Authority and create an urban renewal district. We know that we need to rezone to permit mixed-use development. Right now, you can't have a lot of residential development in this area. We also want to make sure that our zoning is consistent with what is actually on the ground and what is supporting the vision as we move forward. We want to consider a wider range of commercial industrial uses. And we also would like to work to relocate some of the auto-oriented businesses that are along Montello and move them to a more appropriate location in the community. If you've driven down Montello or, or parts of South Main Street, there are dozens of small car auto body shops and repair shops, and those are important businesses to the community, but they're not necessarily in the right location. So how are we going to work with those property owners to find new spaces, new locations for them to keep their businesses here in Brockton, but at the same time, create more opportunity for mixed-use development and more residential development in the heart of, of the neighborhood? We want to work with BAT to identify ways to improve the bus shelters and to the bus routes. We're talking about creating a consistent wayfinding program. One of the biggest issues in Brockton is not knowing where anything is. And so how do you get from one neighborhood to another? The neighbors would like us to look at, how do we keep trucks off of Main Street? And is it possible to create a new truck route that allows trucks to bypass Main Street and keep that much more walkable? And they'd like to also see traffic calming measures on Main Street. And that's part of the consistency of making it much more walkable and pedestrian-friendly. And then open space recommendations, and, and I should say that these are highlights of dozens of recommendations that are in the plan. We're exploring ways to create a potential Riverwalk along both French Brook and Salisbury Plain River. We're looking at ways to expand Keith Park, and we're looking at opportunities to create new pocket parks along Main Street. And so those are the major recommendations for the area. And I'm going to drop out of that and stop sharing. And I'm available to answer questions.
It looks good. Very exciting question on the traffic route. I like the idea of minimizing trucks on Main Street. What is the thought or proposed new route for the trucks?
It is possible to, what we're working with, we want to work with Old Colony Planning Council to take a look at this. And how does Plain Street figure into this proposal? Obviously, there's a school in the area, and so we have to be very cognizant of that. But right now, the truck route comes south on Montello, turns right on Plain at a very difficult angle, and then turns back left, south on Main Street at another terrible angle. But if that could be straightened out somehow, because there's a gas station and a couple of other small businesses, if that road could be straightened out, you have much better intersections, makes it easier and safer for, for vehicles to turn, but it also allows us to expand the park into that vacated area.
Very nice.
Madam Chair, if I could, Rob, it's a great plan. You've done a lot of work with that, and it's, it's fantastic. My questions are, you know, you mentioned the auto, you know, relocating the auto businesses. But what would you foresee as some other top challenges? Do you foresee Kmart being an issue in trying to relocate them? I know they're renting there, and I think they may be taking advantage of tax relief as a whole in a business, but and then what are you prioritizing when you, when we implement this?
Yes, moving the auto uses is going to be very difficult. We need to find a location for them to go that is appropriate for them and to incentivize their moving into those locations. Just remember, your zoning is a right. So if you're there, you're, you're grandfathered, you're in existing condition, and nobody can take that away from you. However, your license from the city is a privilege. And maybe working with the city council, we can incentivize on those license renewals to encourage people to, to relocate. The same issue we have with the Kmart Plaza, Kmart still has a, the lease on the property and they can control how the parking lot gets redeveloped and who the tenants are in the building. But if we create an urban renewal district and somebody were to come in, like the Brockton Redevelopment Authority come in with a eminent domain action. Now, of course, that's going to take a lot of money, and we need to, to consider that. But an eminent domain action clears the lease if worse comes to worse. I'm not saying that we're going to do that next week, but that is a, a tool that we should consider using.
And I guess, and the whole plan that you've shown, you know, what, what's going to take priority? What, what are you gonna, what's going to go first? Is it going to be the neighborhood near the rail? Is it going to be north of that? Is it going to be the Kmart or the industrial, like, you know, a series of events? Obviously, it's not all going to be done at once.
Correct. The highest priority is the area between these Campello Towers up to Nielsen Street. So that's the area that includes the MBTA Station and the, what is the walkable heart of the Campello Neighborhood, from the Franklin Building to the, and gosh, I just did that to myself, and I forgot the name of the other building. But there's two historic buildings on that street that kind of bookend each other. And that is really, you know, ground zero for Campello, and we want to see that area increase as a mixed-use area, while the area around the train station is much more residential, and it bridges the neighborhood back together again and gives you better access to the train.
Awesome. Thanks, Rob. Thanks, Madam Chair.
All right, other questions from board members? Is this open for public?
Madam, Madam Chair, a quick question for Rob. I, I guess, is the transportation and the housing plan, are they all going to be, do you imagine them like connecting and it being implemented together? Or is the, the zoning being prioritized over the transportation piece?
Our next steps is continuing to work with the Resident and Business Advisory Committee to create new zoning to comply with the MBTA requirements that the state has created and to adequately support the, the vision for what the community has developed. So zoning is number, number one. Number two, we will work towards an urban renewal plan. We'll get about 90% of the way there. There's some new requirements for the Mass Environmental Protection, MEPA process that is added considerably to our budget that we can't take on right now. But we'll get most of our way to that point. And we're also considering creating a district improvement financing plan for the area, which would allow us to capture some of the incremental revenue that's created through the redevelopment of these areas and reinvest that into infrastructure projects in the city. Now, trying to get some of these projects funded for, for engineering, we have applied to US Department of Transportation under the bipartisan infrastructure legislation. And we have a couple of different projects that we're trying to do, including a better connection from the train station to the east side of the tracks. I know the city's going to be making some signal improvements on Montello Street. No, excuse me, on Main Street at Nielsen, at South, and one other corner that was awarded some State Streets funding from the federal government. And then we were going to be working with the Old Colony Planning Council to do a trucks, truck traffic study. So zoning first, start to get some early successes, work on the transportation, and that'll keep us very busy for the next couple of years.
Thanks, Rob. Yeah, the, that makes a lot of sense, and I definitely think that the right zoning changes could really help that area. I think mixed use makes a lot of sense for what that area is already trying to communicate to us in a lot of ways.
Thank you, Evan. It's the Kingman Building.
A motion to approve Campello Neighborhood.
First, hold on one second. Can I have control of the screening? Is there, is this open to public?
We can take any public comment if you'd like, yes.
Okay.
So if there are members of the public who would like to comment on this plan, please use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen. Just wanted to let, let everybody know that we have gone through a very extensive public participation process up to this point. And so if, none of this should be a surprise to anybody. And we've been really happy with the participation up until now. And I see Veronica Stevens has, would like to speak, and I'm going to open her microphone now.
Hello, everyone. How are you this evening?
Well, how are you?
All of a sudden, I can't hear you.
We can hear you.
If anybody can hear me, just raise your hand. Hi there. Oh, good. I want to tell you, I attended a couple of the events within the community. I was really grateful to hear tonight. So many of the things that we were looking for were incorporated. I do have two questions if I could. One was on the licensing that Rob mentioned being a privilege. Does that mean any of the auto ownerships would be having their licenses held at bay in order for them to be forced out? And the other is the eminent domain regarding the Kmart Plaza, because it's, it's an eyesore down there. I really like to see something positive go in, and lots of things have been offered, but nobody's been able to make anything stick. Other than that, I'm really excited, and thank you for all you're doing.
Okay, you're welcome. So licensing and the Kmart Plaza using urban renewal are both tools that are available to the city through City Council. I do not have that kind of power. It's a shame. But those are options that we want to present to them, and as time goes on, it may be that the city wants to exercise those powers. We're not recommending it lightly, and we're not recommending that it happen tomorrow. But when the situation is right and we have a property owner who isn't willing to make investments that the community wants, that, that's a decision up to City Council.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Any other hands raised?
Madam Chair, I do not see any other hands raised at this time.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, James?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Yolando?
Yes.
And Tony, yes. All right, thanks, Rob. Next, we have the Brockton Digital Equity Plan Review. Is that you as well?
That is me again. So for the last year, the city has been working with funding from the Mass Broadband Institute and a group of concerned Brockton residents and businesses to better understand digital equity in Brockton. As we all learned from the COVID years, you know, businesses shut down, people went home to work, schools were closed, and it required a lot of us to shift to online resources. And Brockton, like a lot of Gateway communities, was not adequately prepared for that. And it's not, for lack of trying, but because of how our service, our city is served by a single entity in the community. So we went out and did some studies to figure out where we're going. And when we say digital equity, we mean three things. The first is a fast and reliable internet service in the home. It doesn't mean I've got, you know, Verizon out on the doorstep, you know, out in the, in the street. It's, does that service actually come to your home? Can you afford that service? And is it reliable? The next is having appropriate devices. You'll see in the next slide, there are an enormous amount of people in Brockton who only, whose only access to the internet is on a smartphone. And if you're trying to do taxes or telehealth or any of those other things, taking a class, telephone access just doesn't cut it. So we want to make sure that the folks at home have a wide range of devices that they can use. And having the device is nice, but having the skills to use that device and to work on the internet is, is the next part of the digital equity part. I have, oh, I don't want to say it. I've got computers over here that are so old, I don't know how to use them anymore, but, or they don't work anymore. So you can't count those as, as having adequate devices. And likewise, if you, you know, are having trouble getting online or understanding how to find things on the internet, we need to work on your skills at that point. So for example, you know, during our analysis, we found that 2,500 homes. Um, so for example, you know, during our analysis, we found that twenty-five hundred homes um, don't have any form of internet access. There's eleven thousand homes that don't have a laptop or desktop computer. And twenty-three hundred um, don't have any form, wow, that's a repeat, I think. Uh, and then there's ten thousand phone, uh, ten thousand folks. That, ten thousand homes that only have access via the, the telephone, uh, a smartphone. So key findings that we came out of this plan is that the internet access um, is, is a sizable challenge for many people in Brockton. It's, it's not in, necessarily in your community, it's not affordable, uh, and it's um. Very difficult to use, especially um, for people with low income or have limited English proficiency. Cost is by far the largest barrier to people getting on the internet. It's incredibly expensive. Um, so how do we go, yeah, and, and one of the things that we'll talk about in the recommendations is how do we go? And potentially create a system that is much more uh, affordable for people. Um, a lot of people in Brockton um, who have been, have inadequate speeds and reliability issues. Access to com- uh, computing devices is also very difficult. And then lastly, we talk about the ability um, to use the internet. And this reinforces the findings that we had mentioned, or the, the points I had made earlier. So from this, we've developed an action plan. Um, our first key recommendation is that the city needs to develop a governance plan for the implementation of this project. We would like to find a new um, person to work and organize digital equity in the city. And so we're um, looking at a couple of different sources for um, state or federal funding to help us implement the project. We also want that person to then connect, conduct, continued outreach to income eligible households. To find out what their needs are, to find out how to make um, uh, reliable or affordable. Internet access um, and to increase the availability of ISPs, internet service providers in the city. We want to be able to increase access to computing devices. So there are two programs where we could either work with the Brockton Public Library and um, have loner programs. Um, or we can work with a couple of different nonprofits to establish a program to recycle and refurbish. And then we, we just, distribute that um, devices back to people. To make them uh, much more affordable. And lastly, um, understanding, getting the skills right. Um, could we have digital navigators in key organizations throughout the city? Um, somebody who could come over to your apartment or house and help you understand how to get online. Or hold small classes in the languages that are most prevalent to you. To be able to better understand the internet. And then uh, continue to working with partnerships, both at the state and national level to, that specialize in digital skills training. And that is the quick synopsis of that. Um, I'm gonna stop sharing. We have that plan also up on the city's website. Um, by adopting this plan, it makes us eligible for additional state and federal funding. To um, identify uh, areas where fiber could be introduced. Uh, one of the concepts we're thinking about is bringing high capacity fiber to all the Brockton pub- public housing buildings. And large uh, affordable housing um, developments in the city. Which uh, will not only provide better access and affordability for those residents. But also could serve as a backbone for building out a larger network in the city. Oh, I'm sorry, that's where I am. So thank you for your time. Sorry, that went nowhere.
Thanks, Rob. Um, so question, will this decrease cost? I mean, I find internet expensive now and the service not always great, so it could be quicker. So by increasing the ISPs and this whole project with this decreased cost for everyone in the city of Brockton? Or just folks that are now at a disadvantage?
Um, we want to get the folks who are at a disadvantage first, but then we also want to be able to work with everybody. Um, because, you know, we're all stuck with either Comcast or now Verizon is, is laying out some things. Having Verizon in, in town should create some more competition. And there's other service providers that we could try to attract to the community. And the more competition there is, the less expensive things become.
And obviously, the school systems would be a priority as well.
Oh, yes.
All right, um, other questions from board members?
Madam Chair, if I um, could ask, Rob, um, thank you so much, Rob, for uh, looking into this and working with um, outside partners. On this, uh, we'd, yeah, we'd definitely like in the, I think, beginning of a new industrial revolution in a lot of ways. And we don't want Brockton to uh, be on the back burner uh, and not be able to access a lot of opportunities. That other folks will, uh, other communities will have access to. Um, and I think it'll be great for economics in general for the city if we can um, participate. Uh, I guess my question is, if you can, have we looked into municipal broadband um, like Quincy? Um, is look, um, trying to implement, is that something that's like, you know, a, a, a larger project? And not in the scope of this?
If you see me biting my lip, it's because um, before this plan, we did a digital access um, plan. And we came up with an, a, a way to produce a municipal broadband plan, just like Quincy. Uh, it would require borrowing funds to invest in the infrastructure and creating a new public utility. Like the water department or the sewer department um, that would um, really serve a lot of our needs. Unfortunately, at the current fiscal um, condition that we are in. It, it may be difficult to do that right now. There might be other partners that could invest in a, in a system and manage it for Brockton. So those are things that we need to explore.
Okay, thank you, Yolanda. Uh, other board members? Okay, no other questions? Uh, any hands up for a public?
Any hands from the public? Madam Chair, I do not see any at this time.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, second.
Second, Larry.
All right, roll call, Larry?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Yolanda?
Yes.
And Tony, yes. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you very much.
Next up, one sixty Pleasant Street, Vicente's Tropical Market, JK Home Green Engineering for a site plan review.
Moving Scott over.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members.
Good evening.
Always the most stressful two minutes of my life, waiting for somebody to reply when I say good evening. Not that I've struck out before, but I'm just always anticipating a problem. So, uh, Madam Chair, I've got a site plan before you tonight uh, for Vicente's supermarket at one sixty Pleasant Street. If I could share my screen, I will.
Evan will allow you.
All right. All right, so, everybody can see my plan?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Great, so we have uh, one sixty Pleasant Street Vicente's supermarket. It was before the planning board, board back in twenty-fourteen, uh, which allowed for the, the reconstruction of, of the building there. Opened up the Vicente's supermarket, uh, giant parking lot, as, as everybody knows, on Pleasant between Glenwood and Warren. Uh, as businesses boomed, uh, for the Barbosa family, they've uh, decided they need a few things. The first thing they wanted to do was to add a small building addition in the back of the building along Green Street. There's a little bit of a corner, they just want to do an infill to give them some additional warehouse space. And that's about a sixteen-hundred square foot building. It's roughly forty by forty. Uh, the other thing they, they were really uh, interested in was increasing the parking on the site. Just about anytime you go to Vicente's, whether it's a Tuesday or a Saturday, the parking lot is jammed. Uh, as you folks know, they have two large grass areas on the property, one up here at the corner of uh, Pleasant and Glenwood. And then a much larger area between the access off of Warren Ave and all the way to Pleasant Street. Uh, so they were hoping to, to construct parking within those areas. And back in twenty-fourteen, the, the site plan that we did, uh, that received planning board approval. It did show a complete buildout of the site. It actually showed two pad sites in those locations, hoping for a bank or a fast food restaurant or something to that effect. Uh, would look to, to lease the, the property there. Nothing ever happened. At this point, uh, the folks at Vicente's wanna proceed and, and build the parking in that area. Uh, again, as part of the twenty-fourteen plan, that buildup was all uh, was all accounted for within the utilities on the site. Within the drainage system. So building these parking areas now, uh, we don't have to increase the drainage system. The drainage system that was designed, approved and installed is working fine. It uh, complies with all stormwater management guidelines from Mass DEP and from uh, from Brockton. Uh, so we don't have any increased runoff issues from that drainage system. And we've actually increased uh, by a small amount, but we've increased the green space on the property currently. Uh, not currently, the approved plan had ten point two percent green space. This plan will get us closer to twelve percent green space. Uh, so we're happy to, to do that. Going through the technical review process, uh, and talking with uh, the planning department. We've made a few uh, changes in addition to those parking areas. Uh, there were some concerns about the entrance and exit off of Pleasant Street. Uh, if you go out there now, there is a very small little triangle uh, that was intended to force people. To enter uh, from Pleasant Street as a right turn only and to exit right turn only on Pleasant Street. Which uh, would obviously free up traffic and stop people from uh, from crossing lanes of traffic to get into the site. To be honest with you, it's a very small triangle that, that really doesn't do what our intention was. Uh, so at uh, Evan's urging, we've uh, come up with a much larger. Try to blow up, which. A much larger uh, concrete area that will force traffic exiting the site to take a right onto Plain Street. Uh, to Pleasant Street and allow traffic coming down Pleasant Street to take a right. And hopefully, uh, discourage people uh, from either taking a left onto the site or from taking a left exiting the site. There's, as you folks all know, there's other ways to get into the site. There's an entrance on Glenwood, entrance on Warren Ave and an entrance. Uh, back on Green Street, so there's plenty of other ways for people to get in. But this added island uh, greatly improves the, the traffic flow on Pleasant Street and just helps the, the, the traffic lights. Uh, in addition to that, we've added a series of trees and landscaped islands within our proposed parking area. Uh, try to jump over to my landscape plan really quick, Madam Chair. Uh, there's, there's some trees out there, but to be honest, it's a little bit skinny. So these red trees are the proposed trees in some of the uh, existing landscaped islands that we're proposing. Uh, this is our proposed parking lot. We have uh, landscaped islands and trees there. A series of shrubs along Pleasant Street. And then some additional trees up along Green Street. There are trees behind the main part of the building on Green, but nothing as you head to Warren. So at Rob's urging, we added those trees as well. Uh, so that, that's really a, a quick review of what we're hoping to uh, to get approved here tonight, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Scott. And I, I think this is well needed. I love to shop at Vicente's and I'll agree, it's quite hectic. Getting in and out of there with parking and traffic, so um, good plan. I heard your uh, review of the stormwater management, but you do plan on having the approval from the city engineer?
We, yes ma'am, we still have to, uh, as part of the building process, it gets flagged through the, the stormwater uh, authority. So we'll still have to go through that process, correct?
All right, thank you, Scott. Uh, other board members?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I have a question. Um. Scott, consideration to forcing the traffic up to Glenwood Square, because it's already a, basically an intersection that basically needs a light. And capping that Pleasant Street. I mean, I think that, has any consideration gone into that? I know I've heard that idea come up a few times. I didn't know if that was considered.
Is, as far as not allowing people to, to enter from Glenwood?
No, no, allowing people to come and go, both sides of traffic, and utilizing Glenwood Street as kind of like the main entrance. Because the problem with the traffic is you got another stop coming out of the store, and then you've got Glenwood Square also, which has four, four different streets.
Yeah, at least, that's, it's a real, I mean, I, I think Glenwood's a, a messy or intersection. Then our entrance off of, you know, on Pleasant Street entering Pleasant Street, you know, just because the.
Yeah, we need, it would definitely need an upgrade, but I was just wondering if it was considered.
It, it really wasn't. I, I think the, the plan back in twenty-fourteen, you know, there were traffic studies done in the plan today. I, I think, you know, I think we'd like to have more traffic coming in off of the, the main entrance off of Warren Ave. Uh, you know, where people can come either way on Pleasant Street and get into the site that way. Uh.
And Warren Ave will be two, two-way.
And Warren Ave will be a two-way street shortly, exactly.
And, and I'm definitely understanding Jim's um, perspective and yours as well, Scott. Glenwood is very tiny. Um, you really can't do much with that entrance over there. I don't know, some type of roundabout to force traffic off through Green Street going to the west side of Brockton.
I mean, I think, you know, I think most people, you know, you know how you're gonna get there depending on what neighborhood you're coming from.
It, it's, it's the time of the day too, because if you hit this at, you know, eleven AM, it's not so hectic. Five, six, it's a nightmare. It's like Boston.
But the more people you can get off of Pleasant Street and get to use, you know, particularly Warren Ave. I think as Rob just said, the opening that up by two ways should, should really help. I mean, the more people off of Pleasant Street, the better for the supermarket and the better for uh, for just that traffic, the whole area.
I mean, honestly, I, I try to hit Green Street and come through Glenwood.
Yep.
You know, um, so it's, what, what is behind the building? You're putting more trees? The, the red is trees?
Yes, exactly. Right now, there's uh, there's trees behind the main building, but really where we have those red trees, Madam Chair, there's, there's nothing there now. It's just a, a landscaped island with grass, so we'll be planting trees.
And, and one last question, uh, Scott, you know what the percentage of green spaces? Because now, that is, the new parking lot there is all grass right now, right?
Yep, so the, again, the approved plan that, you know, that was proposed to build out this area. In that area, that back in twenty-fourteen gave us ten point two percent green space. With this new plan, we have eleven point five percent green space and it's ten percent as required.
Okay, and are you revamping the, the shrubbery or the, the uh, street trees along Pleasant Street? Is that new or existing?
Would, the red trees are the, are the new trees, so we have one here in the corner. And then uh, some shrubs right up here along the intersection of Pleasant and Warren.
Uh, how tall are the shrubs? Just knee height?
Yeah, those I believe are picea, so probably waist high.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Unless you don't trim them.
Uh, board members, other questions?
Uh, yeah, in regards to the, um, so there's gonna be islands added um, inside the parking lot or no?
There's uh, within our new area, we have islands proposed, uh, you know, in accordance with the zoning that, that doesn't uh. You know, where we can't have uh, larger stretches of parking. So we have those, the rest of the islands are already existing. We're just adding trees. Right now, they're just uh, islands with uh, with mulch, I believe. So we're adding trees in those islands.
I, I guess uh, yeah, so there'll be a total of how many new trees are, are you all thinking of adding?
Three, four, five.
Because it's just the red ones, right? It's not any.
Yeah, I think it's twelve, I believe it's twelve trees and nine shrubs.
Is, is there a reason why they're staying away from um, street trees on like Pleasant and Warren Ave or?
Um, I, I think Warren Ave, to be honest with you, just because of the reconstruction, we didn't really want to put trees down, you know, right now. Not knowing what was gonna happen with the reconstruction. And then along Pleasant, it would. And then along Pleasant, it would really just be this lower corner here, we just felt like the shorter shrubs would work better than larger trees with site distance and issues like that, but, I mean, to be honest with you, we've got nine shrubs there. You know, we could certainly replace it with three trees. We just felt like the shrubs at the intersection would be better for traffic.
Yes, as long as they stay knee height.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Is there any work that will be done on the sidewalk, or the sidewalk's condition's going to remain the same?
The sidewalk will remain the same. The only work would be the increase of the traffic island up at the entrance.
If I could jump in just for the heck of it, the trees in black that are near Warren Avenue and on the corner, those are all new also. The red are the ones that were added after he met with us.
Right.
So there's actually more than, there's three.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't, yeah, I didn't remember those trees there.
There's five or six more that are not on red.
Correct, yeah, they were shown in the original plan but never planted. Thank you.
All right, board members, any other questions?
Oh, I guess, a question regards to stormwater, like, I think you mentioned it, but, and I guess it's going to be something to be looked at more. But if you could just mention a little bit more about, like.
Yeah, so, yeah, right here in the plan, there's a large infiltration system. You know, again, that was, you know, as part of the approval in twenty fourteen, it was installed, working fine. We don't ever have any flooding issues. There's, you can see, there's a series of catch basins, manholes, storm septers, which are part of the stormwater management requirements to actually clean the water before it gets into the infiltration system. And, again, it was sized to handle these additional parking areas. The grades on the parking areas work so that we can grade the, this larger parking area that we're proposing will grade from Warren Ave down to catch basins and enter into the drainage system, so every much without any added fill and really not that much added infrastructure as far as drainage structures proposed.
Hey, great, thank you.
All right, there are no other questions? One, twice, okay, open up for public comment?
Anyone from the public would like to comment on the site plan, please use the raise your hand icon, and we will allow you to address the board. Just hover at the bottom of your screen, and Madam Chair, there are no raised hands at this point.
All right, is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Do we have to add in here to further revise the write-in, write-out and some signage?
Yes.
Okay, so, motion to approve following conditions. Further revise the write-in, write-out to include additional signage and any other necessary design elements, which Scott did already discuss. Final approval is contingent on review and approval of the onsite stormwater management by city engineer.
All right, roll call. James?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Yolanda?
Yes.
Yolando, sorry, Marty?
Yes.
Tony, yes. All right, thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thanks, Scott.
Next up, we have definitive subdivision, four fifty-four Copeland Street, and Scott?
Yes, ma'am, I have this one as well, Madam Chair.
All right.
Again, if I can share my screen. So, four fifty-four Copeland Street, board members, it's an existing single-family home just down from the intersection of Copeland and Susan Road. And what the applicant is hoping to do, the applicant is Americad Properties. They are the developers and the managers of the Skyview Village, which is an over fifty-five modular, modular home project that comes in off of Skyview Drive, kind of right in the came-out plaza area that we were just spoken to, speaking about in Rob's presentation. So, the Skyview Village has been really successful. They're sold out, they don't have any more land to build on. So what they are hoping to do is to have you folks approve this definitive subdivision, which would cut the existing property at four fifty-four Copeland Street into two lots. One lot would remain on Copeland Street with a hundred forty feet of frontage and about eighteen thousand square feet. The remaining parcel, about eleven thousand square feet, would go over to Skyview Village, and the hope would be to go for a special permit modification. The special permit is what allowed Skyview Village in the first place to modify that approval and allow two additional modular units off of the Finney's Way cul-de-sac. So it's, there's kind of a lot of steps to go through. This definitive subdivision before you folks would allow us to divide the property as shown and get us in front of the Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals would have to grant a variance to make Lot A, an existing non-conforming lot, more non-conforming. So we would need Board of Appeals approval to create Lot A, create Parcel B, which would then go over to Skyview Village. Then we would have to go back through the modification process of the special permit that allowed Skyview Village and get the two additional homes permitted at that point. So that's the long-range view of what we're hoping to accomplish tonight, folks.
All right, thank you, Scott. Board members, questions?
I have a question. Scott, can you just outline where Lot A is? I'm having a tough time seeing it on there. Is that frontage to Copeland Street?
Yeah, so this is frontage on Copeland right here, Mr. Sweeney, the hundred and forty feet.
Okay.
It comes down, would cut across, and then come down right here.
Okay, and is there an additional house set for that lot?
No, sir, there's the house on Lot A, then Parcel B would be a non-buildable lot by itself, and we would hope to include that in Skyview and get two additional modular homes on.
On that parcel, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? I have a question actually for Rob. Is there still a waiver consideration needed for frontage?
Yes, they would need a frontage waiver.
Correct.
Because Parcel B is now landlocked.
Okay. All right, board members, no other questions? Okay, we'll open up to public.
And before we opened up to public, I do want to note that we did receive communications from Fourth Ward Counselor Susan LaCastro, who wanted to express her wholehearted support for this project.
Okay, thanks.
And anybody else who would like to address the board, please use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen at this time. When we see your raise the hand icon go up, we will unlock your microphone so you can address the board. And Madam Chair, we do not have any raise your hands, anyone with their hands raised at this time?
Okay. I still have a question on the waiver. So if the frontage isn't changing, why are we concerned about a waiver?
I believe mostly, Madam Chair, because we would be creating Parcel B, which has no frontage.
Yes.
Okay, thank you at that. All right, is there a motion? To approve its standard conditions?
Motion to approve with standard conditions?
Second.
All right, roll call. Larry?
Yes.
Yolando?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
And Tony, yes. All right, next is the waiver for frontage. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, Larry?
Yes.
Yolando?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Tony, yes. All right, thank you, Scott.
Thank you, folks. Thanks for your time. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Scott.
All right, next up and last on the agenda is Zero West Street. It's a definitive subdivision, and ET Engineering, Inc. is representing.
Doesn't look like they're here.
Representative here?
There were two people in the room.
They just left, so they must have been.
Is the applicant here?
I have no one in the attendees' room except for Ms. Stevens.
Okay, does some, do you have a contact for ET Engineering?
Should be a zoo.
I can try to call them or. Should I do that, or I can try to get some of the email too?
Yeah.
Or we can continue it to date certain. Which would be August.
Well, since there really aren't any issues with this plan, I know in the past we've reviewed it without the, although I guess we would need to make it clear with board members that we were considering this. Can we review it without the applicant, since this isn't a major plan or issues, concerns?
I believe you can, Madam Chair. I can also pull up the plan if you'd like.
All right, so board members, would you like to review this plan about the applicant and vote whether to pass it or deny it? Does anyone object to that?
I'm okay with reviewing it.
All right. Let's review it. Evan, can you please pull up the plan?
Eric, can, give me one second. You should be able to see it now. If you'd like, I can just explain it real quickly as well. All right, so, yeah, you guys saw this a while back as a preliminary. This is the two lots that, by the mall, right by the D'Angelo's. It was a vacant lot originally. They asked to split it into two to build two single-family houses on there. The preliminary was conditioned to straighten out the lot line in the middle. Originally, it was kind of crooked and to add more trees along West Street. Both of those conditions have been met. They're just coming back now to kind of complete the process for the subdivision.
Okay. Pretty clear-cut. Any questions, though? Marty, did you have a question?
And Madam Chair, just a comment. I mean, these houses are already up and built, so, I mean, this is kind of a, for lack of better words, an after-the-fact kind of a, just cleaning it up. I don't think there's anything major. I don't know if we were going to hear anything different from the applicant or the engineer anyways. I just, I'm comfortable with what I'm seeing and hearing.
Thank you, Larry. So I know the frontage was, didn't we already vote on a waiver for that? Because it was in character with the rest of the neighborhood, the street, and they met the issues as far as straightening out the lot line and the trees.
Yes.
You did accept it, but you would still need to vote on the waivers for the definitive.
Okay. All right.
Madam Chairwoman, could I say something?
Absolutely.
There's a lot of history here for me personally. This goes back to when I was on the city council, so we're talking over twenty years ago. And it was a nightmare. Walgreens wanted to come in, and I set a plan and motion with the neighborhood. And then in the end, they reneged on the plan, and that lot ended up being vacant. So I, for one, am happy to see houses there. Took a long time, but here we go.
Who reneged? Walgreens reneged on the plan?
No, no, not Walgreens. Walgreens originally wanted to be on the corner of Palmer. And, and West, they wanted to buy properties on Pleasant Street, which they ended up having to buy two properties. And, so in other words, they wanted to go right up to Palmer. They were going to build trees and berms and all kinds of things. And the neighbor, I had the neighborhood agree, and then the neighbors backed off. And my regret back then is I shouldn't, I should have gone forward with it, because that means Walgreens would have been right on that corner. But instead, we ended up with a vacant lot for over twenty years, with weeds and every other thing, so it's nice to see it developed.
Yes.
It is. Glad we're happy about that. All right, is there a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion, whatever the motion is to approve it.
Approve with standard conditions, please.
Yep, okay, approve with standard conditions.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, Larry?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Yolando?
Yes.
Tony, yes. All right, next, we need a waiver for the frontage, please. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second? All right, Yolando?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Tony, yes. All right, thank you, everyone. I believe that completes our agenda. If there is no other business, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, Larry.
All right.
Thank you, Larry.
Thanks, Larry.
It's been a pleasure. I'll stay in touch if I can be of any help at all down the road, just please let me know.
You could come back later.
All right, roll call quickly. James?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Yolando?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Tony, yes. All right.
Before you.
Thank you, Larry, for your service.
Oh, Isaiah.
Sorry, I was saying, I think I sent out, you guys should have got the sign-in sheets.
Not yet. When did you send it?
Right before, maybe it went to one, I might have did that thing where it like goes.
Yeah, probably has to go to one person first.
I hate that.
Before I forget, is there anything we need to come in and sign for, any of these documents?
A and R's, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'll prepare those. I'll let you guys.
You'll let us know, okay. Thank you.
So Larry, your last service will be signing those.
All right, I will come in.
You can come see the new office before you leave.
All right. I'm not going to disappear, you know, I'm still going to show up once in a while.
That's what they all say, man.
Yeah, you watch. Thank you.
Where's the new office?
Is it fifty-five City Hall Plaza, I believe?
Yes.
It's right across, it's like the next building.
Ground floor of Brockton Commons. Right next to the Peruvian place.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, oh, and the old ADH?
Yes.
Oh, that was my program, when I read for you. All right, thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Night.
Night, y'all.